I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for Monday, March 3rd, 2025, to order at this time. We'll ask Mr. Brett DeSalms, our county attorney, to provide the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us play. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord be with the commissioners in their deliberations, and bless them with wisdom, guidance, and guidance as they address the items on today's agenda. We pray for our military and first responders who continue to serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory.
Amen.
Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, join me in a moment of silence.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take a minute to recognize the elected officials with us this morning. In the back, our sheriff, Sheriff Chris Thomas. We have our Register of Deeds, Amiga Jarman with us. Town Alderman, North Topsail Beach, Rick Grant, and mayor from Hollywood, Pete Perrin. We appreciate you, all of you, being here this morning. I don't think I've missed anyone, so we're good there. So, thank you for being here. We need a motion to adopt the agenda this morning.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Move to item number two, which is the approval of the consent agenda. Do we have anyone with any items they will need to identify for more conversation to be removed and brought to the agenda from the consent agenda? If not, we will need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Shalom.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to recognize Mrs. Hoover, soon-to-be Dr. Hoover, from what I've learned, for everything that she does in the community. Very intelligent young lady, and she was very helpful during COVID when our conference calls and stuff. And I'm looking forward to when you're presenting before us and sharing us with the things that you do. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Davis. There's quite a few items with the Health Department and Ms. Hoover on the consent agenda. So, yes, we absolutely appreciate the work that you do. We have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. We ask that everyone attendants to please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate mode. The board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited no more than five minutes, and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda. Mr. Smitherman, do we have any, anyone sign up for public comment?
We do have a couple speakers today. Mr. Chairman, the first one is Ari Rakowitz.
Ms. Ari, as you approach the microphone, just a quick reminder that comments must be related to things that the board has control over or on today's agenda.
Commissioner Bennett has informed me I'm still a terrible teacher as the board has not learned the difference between hearing and listening, or between what's legal and what's kind or respectful. My attempts to win your hearts and minds to respect separation of church and state have failed. Justice will continue to be denied here, and I have neither the financial means nor the emotional stamina or ethical interest to personally fight in court. Even if you have the legal right to abuse people this way, choosing it is too cruel for governing bodies. I cannot revise my comments any better than I've been doing in my condition, which is what he asked when he called me in to meet with him. I hope after I leave, the county will use the Integrated Municipal Committee Commissioner Davis recommended to solve problems by providing accessible quality services quickly, sustainably, equitably, and effectively, so that the whole community can thrive. The strategic plan seems shiny, but the policies, procedures, and implementation you use to enact it matter. Religious, capitalistic, fascist implementation could still kill the beautiful idea. Don't throw this baby out with the bathwater. I'm glad quarterly public health events like the Social Determinants of Health Super Saturdays hosted by AmeriHealth Caritas exist, but relying on them feels like slapping Band-Aids on gaping festering societal wounds. Email ncook1@amerihealthcaritasnc.com to learn about the September event. And Black History Month may have ended, but we should celebrate all year. Celebrate International Women's Day and local black history at the Burn With Wind fundraiser on March 8th at Size Healthy Fitness, 2840 Henderson at 9:00 a.m., and celebrate the 75th birthday of the Onslow County NAACP branch, March 14th at 153 Broadhurst Road. It's a church, and I'm an atheist who wants respect for separation of church and state, but I'll be there. Visit onslowacp.org to learn more and donate. I can enjoy celebrations like these without wanting to be alive, and that subtle difference matters for what rights I should have access and services, what rights and services, because the services are your responsibility, what rights and services I should have access to as a human being. I remind you this because every decision you make affects the people you serve, and many of us need you to make kinder, more inclusive decisions as habit. It's hard work, but it's the work of people who want to live and thrive, and y'all took an oath to serve the people of Onslow County, all of them. No one deserves harassment or assault. Uncoerced informed consent matters, and consent can be revoked, and not only in sexual contexts. In the county I left homeless, I was told by the officer responding to my neighbor's complaint during a peaceful protest of her long-term harassment that I would be denied a restraining order because I thought I would kill a mother of two young children in a fight between us instead of fearing for my own life. I hope injustice like that never happens here. Fear for life is poor criteria, as it leaves people who cope with profound enough to chronic depression to never fear for their lives, entirely unprotected from harassment unless we are willing to lie to law enforcement or healthcare workers. Enjoying moments in life still doesn't make me want to live. How many times did I get up to leave the room, Commissioner Bennett? I forgot to record the interaction, so I'm not even sure myself. To ensure equitable access to voting, voters deserve an election holiday, access to early voting sites every election, ranked choice voting, a vote of no confidence option for every people-only contest, issues on every ballot, and a well-funded, staffed, and supplied Board of Elections. My understanding is municipalities have been unwilling to prioritize early voting costs. With few issues on ballots, few candidates who seem willing to ethically reshape systems of governance, and a decades-underfunded Board of Election, I understand why Onslow County municipal voter turnout gets as low as 12%. Shameful. The Board of Elections building the only early voting site for municipal elections is more than a two-hour walk from here, barely outside city limits. Before you say vote by mail, the post office is even farther, and policies for people experiencing homelessness and housing instability are quite callous. The day I collected my voter registration, I was initially told it was not available. I had checked the previous day, too. Luckily, the employee was kind enough to check what seemed to be the undeliverable stack. Not all employees may make that effort or overlook the expired date on my photocopy of an old ID. Several people I met experiencing homelessness had less ID than that, and many people experiencing long-term homelessness are veterans. Two I met in Virginia used wheelchairs. Do you want to continue to be responsible for disenfranchising veterans and letting them die on affordable housing waiting lists, or worse, deny them shelter for struggling with a health condition? Housing and accessible voting for veterans and the people they fought to protect would better honor the dead than graves or wreaths placed upon them. Closed hotels would make excellent apartment-style shelters, so I hope the red carpet homes are developed sustainably and effectively, and similar efforts follow quickly throughout the county. But we need permanent homes for all who want them and quality-
Mr. Chairman, our next speaker is Mike Kayley, or Cowley, I'm not sure.
Kayley.
You're good.
Got it right the first time.
Good morning, Chairman Foster and County Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. I come here this morning to talk about the budget, because you're currently getting involved with the county budget for this next '25-'26 season. Y'all know me, and so I'm just going to say this. Hopefully, I get it done in the timeframe. If not, I'll come back and speak another five minutes. But just real quick, I know that a lot of the budget goes to the school system once you guys get it. I just want you to think twice about when they set up what they're going to do with that money, that you re-look at, ask questions, get engineers, talk to them. But I know we need more schools already. We need to turn around, look at all of our housing areas, where we're going to build them, how much land we're going to buy. But you really, really need to look at building two-, three-story schools and not single-story schools. It can be done. It can be done. If we can build these condos and businesses in different places, why can we not do that? All right? The other thing is, somebody might say they're going to turn around, the legs are too short for the stairs for the elementary kids. Wrong answer. Back in my day, being a little kid, what'd we do? Climb up and downstairs in a school, three stories tall. It can be done. Ask the right questions, get it done. I know the school system gets the money, they do what they want with it, but we have the purse for it, and it's the tax dollars money. Enough on that subject. Coming back to firing EMS, you know, I'm on the Fire Rescue Commission for four years, chief at Halls Run Rescue X amount of years. We need to look at the big picture of what's going on with all of this. We need to talk to developers. We need to strategically set our new fire stations as they are being built. We need to look at the big, big picture in this of how it's going to fit the community. You know, before they did away with the volunteer rescue squads, we were looking with norm to restructure, re-divide the county into sections. That went to the wayside. Need to come back and re-look at all of that. Coming back. We don't need new EMS stations like they talked about a couple years ago. You already got EMS stations. Are they outdated? Yes. But don't build a new EMS station when you're going to build a new fire department. You don't need it. When an ambulance is sitting in a parking lot somewhere, it's because they're, it's not that they don't have a place to go, it's because they're doing a standby while another unit is on the call. So, they strategically set somewhere so they can go in any direction for a call. But build a new fire departments, put an EMS bay in there for them. Consolidate. We can't afford to keep spending money for resources that they're not going to set in. And coming back to volunteers, paid, we need to look at the big picture. Needs a big sit-down, might tick some fire chiefs off, but they need to come to the table and give up a little bit of power and look at the big picture of how we can better do the community. We got to fight harder for our volunteers. But we all know in this room that we're running out of time, and we need to go to paid. And I personally think we need to restructure and do EMS and fire together, not separate divisions. Put a paramedic in a fire station, you know, instead of being just separate. Cross train. Use your assets to your benefit. That's where we need to go. How are we going to pay for it? Guess as good as mine, but it's got to come. We're running out of resources. We're running out of territory, especially when it comes to building fire stations and schools and all this. This all used to be a lot of farmland. Now, what is it? Housing additions. And we're growing. More people coming to the base, more people retiring here in Onslow County, the whole nine yards, the list goes on. But we need to look at the big picture, ask questions, get back to ask questions. One of the department heads, don't just take that department head's word for what that budget's for. Ask questions. What are they really going to do? If you're going to buy more buildings or re-renovate, get the quotes before you buy. And I'm running out of time, but God bless y'all. Remember June, 250 years old through the Continental Congress for the Army Birthday, October Navy Birthday, November Marine Corps Birthday, 250 years old this year. Don't forget it. God bless, and first tomorrow is too, Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the public comment section of our agenda.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So, well, we are moving now right into our public hearings, and we're going to start first with the Coastal Bay rezoning, and we'll bring Mr. Carter Metcalf up to start the presentation for us.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and County Commissioners. First item of four this morning is the Coastal Bay rezoning request, PRA Z 2024, number 33. The applicant is Tidewater Associates, and the owner is Coastal Bay Developers LLC. So, look at an overview of the request. It's from residential 15 to residential 5. Two tax map numbers in question, 765A-98 and 765A-99, located at 300 and 302 Coastal Reef Court and is in the Stumps Sound Township. Total rezoning area across both parcels is .73 acres, and currently there is no existing use for the property. As we compare the service overview, adjacent streets are Sand Piper Place and South Stingray Lane. On both of those streets, we have a six-inch unwasse PVC water main, and there's also an eight-inch sewer main. Fire service for the area is in Turkey Creek within ISO rating of four. Our closest traffic count came from Highway 210 with a trip count of 20,000. Staff estimates the capacity around 14,000. Schools serving the property would be Dixon Elementary, Dixon Middle School, and Dixon High School. In current projections, we would have both the elementary and high school overcapacity, while the middle school would have some remaining capacity. So, we look at the zoning map here, you can see the dark purple is that residential 5, which is kind of the rest of Sand Piper Place and Coastal Reef Court area, as well as further along down Village Drive. And then you can see the lighter pink is that residential 15 category. As we compare the two districts, residential 15 has that purpose to accommodate the moderate-density, single-family residential developments in the suburban areas of the county. Minimum lot size would be 15,000 square feet, and multifamily would not be permitted. As we compare to residential 5, its purpose is to accommodate moderate to high-density, single-family, and multifamily developments. Minimum lot size decreases to 5,000 square feet, and now an allowed multifamily density of 20 units per acre. So, we take a look at the comprehensive plan, was designated the category of village. This is a category where we combined two previous categories from the Sneed's Ferry Community Plan, as was from community input at the time. It combines both the Village Center category and the traditional neighborhood. When we look at those categories, traditional neighborhood is to create, as the name provides, traditional neighborhoods and variety of housing types and densities. And Village Center is to accommodate office, retail, and service uses. The goal is to create a sense of place for our fellow citizens in Sneed's Ferry. As we look at the comprehensive plan, you can see the entire neighborhood there is in that village category. As we look at the environmental conditions, there are no regulated flood zones, no blue line streams, and no wetlands were submitted to county staff. However, those will be reviewed through the development process. So, we take a look at reasonableness in the public interest. Could be considered reasonable because it aligns with the future land use map. Objectives 1.1, 2.2, and 6.1 all would support the rezoning. 1.1, again, since it aligns with the future land use map, or to utilize our future land use map. Objective 2.2 would support it because it's close to existing services, therefore would be providing cost-effective services. And 6.1 would promote a broad range of housing. R5 has more housing options than R15, so therefore that objective would support it. Then the non-supporting objectives would be 1.2, 2.3, and 2.4. 1.2, we want to proactively manage growth and guide new development towards areas with infrastructure capacity, both with a projected roadway nearby of Highway 210, and with our schools potentially being overcapacity. There'd be limitations on both of those infrastructure types. However, both water and sewer would have capacity. And so that is why objectives 2.3 and then 2.2 would also follow 1.2, because those would be our concerned infrastructure. Planning Board met at February 6th and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant was present for the meeting. No citizen spoke against the application. There were some general questions around historical rezonings, such as why are these two parcels still R15? There was a rezoning, Coastal Village rezoning. It was voted by the Board of Commissioners on March 7th of 2022. It was recommended for approval. That was the rest of that area. These two parcels were not a part of that rezoning. There were no military impacts, though, that were presented during the planning board meeting. So, take a look. These are aerials from 2022, so it appears cleared. However, that is not what it is on the ground today. You can see there are some existing homes from existing development. They are at the very entrance of Sand Piper Place and Village Drive. Here again, closer look, how those two lots orient around that anticipated cul-de-sac. There's the required posting for today's hearing, but a little bit of a wider view there. You can see the cul-de-sac is there and installed, and those lots have been cleared. And as respectfully requested, the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of PRA Z 2024, number 33, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes this half presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. So, we will open the public hearing at this time, and we'll take comments from the public. Mr. Smitherman, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. We have one speaker, Josh Edmondson.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Josh Edmondson, through Sixth New Business Street, Tidewater and Associates. As Mr. Metcalf said, the other portions of this section of the subdivision were rezoned a few years ago. At that time, the developers approached the owners about buying these properties to include, and the owners did not want to sell at that time. So, Tidewater went through with the design and permitting of those other 12 lots after the commissioner's approved rezoning. Recently, the owners have decided they would, in fact, like to sell. So, in order to develop these lots consistently with the other lots, that is a reason for our request. Obviously, we have to go back and redesign and re-permit to include these two lots if they're rezoned to R5. So, that's the basis for our request before we today. Happy to answer any questions that anyone may have for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, a call to the audience that would like to speak during this comment time? Okay, having none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it to the commissioners for discussion. We'll just need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. So, we'll move, Mr. Metcalf will bring you back up for the Parish rezoning.
All right. The second item is the Parish rezoning request, PRA Z 2025, number two. We finally made it to 2025. Only took us two months. The applicant is Adam Parish, and then the owners is both Adam Parish and Hunter Brook Parish. Overview of the request is from residential 8, manufactured to community business. Tax map number 1001-30.1. It's located at 249 Fulter Landing Road in the Stumps Sound Township. Rezoning area is .25 acres, and the property is currently vacant. Overview of the services for the area, there's a six-inch unwasse water main along Fulter Landing Road, and the nearby properties are served by individual septic systems. The fire service is Turkey Creek with an ISO rating of four, and our traffic count from 2023 had us at 1,200 trips for Fulter Landing Road. Staff estimates the capacity of over 10,000. The schools are the same as before, with both the elementary and this high school projected to be overcapacity, while the middle school would be having some remaining capacity. Look at the rezoning map. You can see most of the area is the residential 8 manufactured. However, there are some nearby properties that are community business. That properties are primarily the Fulter Landing Campground. When we compare the two districts, residential 8 manufactured is to accommodate moderate to high-density, single-family, as well as multifamily residential, minimum lot size 8,000 square feet. Multifamily is by special use permit with up to 10 dwelling units per acre, as well as also manufactured home parks are also a special use permit. Comparatively to community business, its purpose is to accommodate establishment of small-scale retail and service uses that would be serving that nearby community. No minimum lot size, and the density for multifamily is 10 dwelling units per acre. However, it is permitted by right. Take a look at the comprehensive plan. It is for waterside community, and this category is intended to identify those areas of the county that are nearby to our coastal resources, as well as also have that traditional working waterfront. With this being a non-residential request, we look at that non-residential development summary, and it would support small commercial and service uses that would serve those coastal neighborhoods, support tourism, and support that working waterfront, which is, aligns with the intent of that community business designation. Here you see that entire area is in that waterside community designation. Look at environmental conditions. There are no regulated flood zones, no blue line streams, as staff identified, and no wetlands were submitted to county staff yet, but would be reviewed through any development process. And we take a look at reasonableness in the public interest. Community business would align with that non-residential development summary for our waterside community, so aligns with the future land use map. Also, therefore, objective 1.1 would support it. Objective 2.2, because it's obviously creating more cost-efficient services by providing some commercial real estate, and also already being nearby to existing water lines. And then objective 6.3 is Onslow County supports a pro-business, pro-growth attitude. Now, non-supporting would be objective 6.1, because right now it is a residential property, so we'd be removing that ability for manufactured homes by changing it to commercial. So, that is why objective 6.1 would not be supporting. At February 6th, the Onslow County Planning Board met and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant was present, and no citizens spoke against the application. One citizen did speak in favor of it. There were no military impacts, though, presented during the planning board meeting. When we look here, you can see the surrounding area. You see the property there adjacent to a residential structure, as well as the Fulter Landing Campground. Closer look, you can see, again, that property is currently vacant. Here's where we posted the required postage for today's meeting, and then a little bit of a wider look there at the property and at, again, that adjacent residential structure. As respectfully requested, the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of PRA Z 2025, number two, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the chairman to sign necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes this half presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. We will open the public hearing at this time and take comments from the public. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. We have one person signed up for this public hearing, and that is Adam Parish.
Good morning. Appreciate your time. My goal is to put an ice machine on this property. We, I fish. There's a lot of fishermen in this area, and the only option we have is a $4 bag of ice at the Scotchman. So, I'm going to put in an ice machine. The RV park, I'm sure they would, they would enjoy it also. So, that's it. Any questions, more than glad to answer. So.
Thank you, Mr. Parish. Open the floor. Call to the audience. Any other speakers on this? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing and bring it to the commissioners. We'll need a motion.
Motion to approve.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Mr. Metcalf, mosey on back up. We'll have a public hearing on the Canada rezoning.
Indeed, the Canada rezoning, or PRA Z 2025, number three. The applicant is Matt Canada, and there is several owners, as there are three tax map numbers in question. As we take a look at the requested change, it's from rural agriculture to highway business. Tax map numbers are there on your screen for the three different properties, and the location is at 1055 Old Folkeston Road and is in the Stumps Sound Township. Rezoning area is 52.21 acres, and the existing use is that it's forested and vacant undeveloped property at this time. So, we take a look at the water for the area. There is a six-inch unwasse water main along Old Folkeston Road and an eight-inch unwasse sewer forced main. Fire service for the area is Turkey Creek with an ISO rating of four, and our traffic count comes from 2023 on Old Folkeston Road for 8,500 trips. Staff estimates the capacity of over 13,000. The schools are in a similar situation before. The elementary school and the high school are overcapacity. If the property were developed at multifamily, and if staff assumed a projection for that, then that would put the middle school overcapacity as well. But that's with the assumption that multifamily would be developed on-site, not commercial. As we look at the- As we look at the zoning map, you can see the properties are zoned rural agriculture. They're already adjacent to that highway business corridor there along NC Highway 210. As we compare those two districts, rural agriculture is, its purpose is to maintain that rural development pattern that preserves the agricultural character of the county. Its minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, and does not allow multifamily, and does have some limited non-commercial uses. And there's a brief summary of a few of those on that non-residential uses summary section. It's compared to highway business, the proposed zoning district. It's to accommodate the regional-scale commercial uses and foster economic development along our major highway corridors. No minimum lot size and a density of 20,000, excuse me, no minimum lot size and 20 units per acre for multifamily. As we take a look at the comprehensive plan, it's for village, and as again, as we talked about in the previous rezoning, it's a combination of village center and traditional neighborhood. And that comes again from our 2015 Sneets Ferry community plan that we worked to incorporate in Horizon 2040. And those are both a summary of those two types. Since it's a commercial rezoning, we look more at that village center, and if it would be providing retail office and service-related uses. Here is that on our future land use map. You can see that area kind of there to the north of Old Folkeston Road is where we drew the line for the village center. While to the south of it is that waterside community, again, because you're getting much closer to the ICW and as well the Atlantic Ocean. To the north there, you can see that pink, the infrastructure, energy, and extraction that is on Wassa's Sneets Ferry sewer plant. Here you can see the environmental conditions for the property. There are some regulated blue line streams going through the property. Those would be follow, review through any development review processes. We partner with DEQ. There are regulated flood zones on the property, specifically the AE flood zone, and we would follow the floodplain damage prevention ordinance through that process. No wetlands have been submitted to county staff. However, we would expect there to be some, but that would be reviewed, again, through any sort of applications to our office. Here we can see reasonableness in the public interest. Highway business does fit that village center category, so you see it's supported by the future land use map and objective 1.1. 5.2 also is supporting it, because we are guiding the expansion of infrastructure to improve the quality of life. This would expand some infrastructure in the area. 5.2, we seek to broaden the county's economic base with the commercial rezoning of highway business. We would expect an increase to that. Promote a broad range of housing is supporting in this case, because highway business would provide the opportunity for multifamily. And objective 6.2, we want to ensure a range of commercial throughout the county, making it more convenient for our citizens to be able to visit commercial uses and not having to go as far. We'll look at non-supporting, though. Objective 2.4, you know, we're coordinating with Onslow County Schools, with the schools being overcapacity and the multifamily potentially putting the middle school overcapacity. That's why that objective would not be supporting. 4.2 is protecting the natural environment. There is some environmental sensitivity to the site that would need to be reviewed of the development process. And then as well as the objective 6.1, promoting a broad range of housing now cuts the other way, because we're promoting a broad range. Sometimes we want to promote both the rural atmosphere, but also density at the same time, so both low and high density. So that objective supports it in one sense, and does it on the other depending on your viewpoint. Look at Planning Board met at February 6th and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant was present for the meeting, and one citizen spoke in favor of the request. No military impacts were presented during planning board. Here you can see our proximity via this aerial. See the site relative to those streams, as well as you can see there to the north, the Onwasa plant. You can see that commercial corridor corridor there along 210, as well as the other nearby residential neighborhoods. And a little closer look there, you can see most of the property is currently forested. However, there are some fields there along Old Folkeston Road. See there, we can posted the required sign for today's hearing, and then a little bit of a backed-up view. You can see those fields, and then you can also see that wood line that encroached up the middle of the three parcels. It's respectfully requested, the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of PRAZ 2025 number three, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the chairman to sign necessary documents on behalf of the county. Concludes this staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. We'll now open the public hearing for anyone that would have comments. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. First speaker is Matt Canada.
Good morning. Appreciate the chance to visit with you. Obviously, you know, we feel like this land fits into your 2040 Horizon plan, as was mentioned before, your future plans. My wife opened a Pilates studio about a mile away, and just feel like there is a need for more commercial space. Great respect for the land, and, you know, the blue line stream will certainly make sure any planning will take that into account. So don't want to overtalk this. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Like, one last call to the audience.
We do have one more speaker signed up, sir.
My fault, Mr. Smith. So there is another speaker.
There is, and it's John Pierce.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. I want to speak on behalf of, this may be shortened and sweet, it's in a prime location, commercial growth, and we're gonna have some commercial growth. You've got water and sewer, and then it joins commercial, already buttoned up to it, and there's some, there is some, by rezoning, there's some property that's joining some other property at the front zone highway 210, and there'll be some probably some recombinations, and that way it'll be utilizing that property that's on high ground versus having a lot of bunch of crossing permits and all those things that we had to go through with environmental. So I think you'd have less environmental impact by rezoning the properties that could be utilized with some of the roadfront property. And if you've got any questions, I'll be glad to elaborate on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Call to the audience. Anyone else speak? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing and bring this to the commissioners, and we'll need a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. Mr. Metcalf, you moseyed last time, so quickly walk up this time for the public hearing on the winter 2025 zoning text amendments.
Absolutely. So here we have the winter 2025 zoning text amendment requests. So there'll be three amendments before the board, and we will need three separate votes, as they are three separate amendments. But however, we notified them collectively, again, to be cost-efficient in the taxpayer dollar. So it's ZTA 2025 number one, and the applicant is Onslow County Planning and Development Department. So amendment number one is on conditional zoning. Essentially, how the ordinance is now is any site plan would have to be developed towards an engineered standard. This provides a pathway for applicants to be able to develop a less stringent site plan with the condition that obviously engineering is done, proper permits would be provided, but gives the chance for more conditional rezoning applications to come before the board. So this adds the conditional site plan as a new type of site plan, and adds those requirements for the conditional rezoning application. It's a simplified site plan, which details core elements of a proposal with the purpose of providing only the necessary information to the Board of Commissioners for deciding on approving or denying an application. We look at the requirements. They're on the screen, and again, providing some basic plat information, some basic zoning information, and as well also a few basic site conditions. So it's a little bit more complicated than our basic site plan, which is what we use for sheds, decks, and that sort of thing, but not as complicated as a major or minor site plan. Previously, major site plans were required. Here you see is again, some of those other standards that are on there. And again, it's the essential information, those core elements that would be still required on those site plans, with the requirement that a major site plan would be done afterward if they did not already do it to that standard. There's some of the other procedural aspects that we'll put into the ordinance, same timeline as we've already been following. And then, under the application requirements, again, striking through that major site plan requirement, adding the conditional component, as well as also being clear of how we're to handle residential conditional rezonings. And that's that concept plan, that generalized idea of a development. So as the first amendment, the second amendment is for the parks proposal. It's to amend the definition of what we define as a park, and also amend the requirements for establishing one. So we take a look here. Currently, all parks are required to have a paved parking lot, as well as also all of the buffer and landscaping standards that are required. Those buffering and landscaping standards are to prevent any sort of negative externality created by development. Parks are inherently beautified by the county. They're always a net good to the community they serve. And so the county is obviously going to do landscaping, but this is removing that requirement and giving the county more flexibility on how we're to do that, and also, again, to save some taxpayer funding, and remove some, again, some red tape so we can be able to permit parks quicker. And this is also, again, some of those procedural requirements of where we're adding in those requirements. We try to utilize tables in our ordinance to make it more clear on what is required when. So that is the second amendment. The third amendment is the proposed text amendment to allow the zoning administrator the ability to grant the relocation of street yard planting to another location on site when the planting's in conflict with the utility. Currently, there is options for the deferralment of installation when folks are going through the permitting process. If it's in the middle of winter, it's not always the best time to plant. But right now, there's no provision for what happens when those tree roots would be running into Onwasa water lines. So this creates conflicts between us and one of our major strategic partners with being Onwasa. So county staff wants to be the best partner we can be, and also work with developers. So this would allow the opportunity for them to relocate those plantings. The developer will still have to put the same number on site, but gives them flexibility of where to move them. All plantings would still have to be in the public view, so the public still gets the benefit, but gets us an opportunity to work with them and, again, pursue a common sense solution rather than putting a strategic partner in a problematic position. Supporting these amendments, again, we want to provide high-quality and efficient, cost-effective services to our citizens. We want to be mindful as we are guiding the expansion of services, and that's really speaks to the park amendment. And then we also want to support a pro-business and pro-growth attitude, and again, common sense, working with applicants. At February 6th, the Onslow County Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant was obviously present, as it was county staff, and no citizen spoke against the request. No military impacts were, again, presented during the planning board meeting. So it's respectfully requested, the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning text amendments of ZTA 2025 number one. And again, we'll need votes on each of the three amendments, adopt a statement of consistency for the amendments, and authorize the chairman to sign necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes this staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. We'll now open the public hearing. Mr. Smitherman, any?
No one has signed up for this public hearing, sir.
We'll open the floor to anyone that would like to speak. Mr. Pierce? Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll take this to the commissioners, and we'll start first.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, and it'll be.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve amendment one, the conditional zoning. Any discussion?
Could I just ask, Mr. Metcalf, could you give us a hypothetical, just the steps that an applicant would go through, or the process would go through to get to us in the conditional rezoning?
Absolutely. So an applicant would work with county staff to develop a site plan, and they would have that. They would also hold a neighborhood meeting before submitting, so that way they've talked to their neighbors about their proposal, showed them the site plan. They have to present to county staff, which we would then eventually provide to the boards, of what that public meeting entailed, any questions asked. So from the very beginning, they talk to staff about rezoning. They go do their neighborhood meeting, develop this conditional site plan, submit it to staff, goes through our technical review committee, and we would have conversations. Are there any needs for any conditions? Goes to Planning Board. Planning Board would vote to recommend approval or denial. Then the Board of Commissioners would see it, and because it's a conditional rezoning, the opportunity to negotiate conditions with the applicant is on the table. But again, both parties must agree to those conditions, and staff would be then ensured that they would be in writing for all parties involved to be clearly on the same page. So they talk to staff, talk to their neighbors, go through review, Planning Board, and then to this board.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any more discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to accept amendment one on conditional zoning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. We now need a motion for amendment two on parks.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. Finally, we'll need a motion for amendment three on the relocation of planting.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. So we'll move to item six, manager comments. Mr. Smitherman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of updates for the board and for the public's sake. First, we enjoyed a golden sledgehammer ceremony this morning to initiate the renovation and redevelopment of our multipurpose building, which houses our agricultural services, cooperative extension, and most importantly, senior services. It'll be a good while, more than a year before that project completes, but it is a transformational project for the community and for all those citizens that receive service through those departments. Second, I'll bring to your attention that the Chexville Onslow Economic Development Commission continues to work on their strategic plan, took advantage of opportunities for input last week, and there are other opportunities still ahead. Also, as it relates to Joe Ed, we will be, Mr. Foster and I, as well as the mayor of Swansboro, and the chairperson of Joe Ed, will be meeting to discuss entering into partnership with the town of Swansboro around the economic development project, which is in the Swansboro area. And then finally, I do want to bring your attention and the public's attention, what you just did related to those amendments to our planning code. We will continue to look at ways to align our code with the pace of business while still protecting the tenants of our development codes. This is part of our Horizon 2040, our reaction to that plan, and we're doing our part to ensure that development occurs appropriately, but also at a pace to which the county is a facilitator, and certainly not an obstruction to the development of our community. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We'll move to Commissioner comments, and we'll start with Commissioner Carpenter.
I need you to do that. So I'll echo what the manager said about the golden sledgehammer ceremony. That was a lot of fun, and I'm just very glad that we're finally able to start, you know, moving forward with a very necessary piece of what we do for our citizens in Onslow County. And also wanted to just acknowledge Mike Kaylee for coming and speaking today. Thank you very much. I always appreciate your passion for the topics that you have, and you make sage points on a lot of different things, and I think, I just want you to know, we hear you, and I think in the very near future, you will be pleased to know some things that were in the discussion over and what we're working on. So thank you all for coming today, and have a wonderful fake spring week.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Davis?
Sure. My wife decided spring cleaning started on Saturday, so we ended up going to the landfill, and if, Mr. Bruce, I just want to thank him for just the organization that he had with us coming through. I had no idea how many folks would be there on. It was packed, but he had us all organized and in direction. So, Mr. Bruce, if you can hear me, thank you for your hard work and your smile and keeping everything moving, and the ladies at the. keeping everything moving and the ladies at the Way House as well. Thank you. And just thank everybody. Appreciate it. Carter, thank you for the time this morning and just appreciate what we're getting done today.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Commissioner Paget?
Thank you so much. I want to thank all our employees. We have a good staff of employees here and I appreciate everything that you do. And thank all the sisters for coming out and participating in your government because it's yours, not ours. And look forward to seeing you next time. Hope you have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paget. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you, everybody, for being here. I appreciate it and have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We got to go down to Stump Sound for the new playground at our park at Stump Sound. It was, I couldn't believe how many children there were out there at 10 o'clock in the morning on a cold morning playing on the playground. So I have a lot of families here in Onslow County. I appreciate their use of our facilities and I'm glad that we're able to provide them. Also attended the Trades Day Friday at the Community College. I thank the school system for supporting and bringing those fifth graders out. They had a great time and I hope they learned a lot about the opportunities that we have here in Onslow County. So I want to thank everybody for being here. Hope you have a great week and good day.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Vice Chairman, now?
Just a couple of, just a couple of comments, just a reminder what Mr. Foster said. Again, Ari, I'm not sure what you said, but I heard Commissioner Bennett's name, Commissioner Davis's name mentioned in your comments and the comments need to be directed at the board as a whole. So I didn't know what you were saying about them, but I just wanted to remind you that not to single out a single commissioner. When you're talking about the commissioners, we act as a unified bunch, seven of us. Your comments need to be addressed to the board, not each individual commissioner or so. But thank you, though, for your comments. You know, Mike, it's good to see you. You got a lot of good comments. Some of the things that, you know, we've discussed this with the schools, we've discussed this amongst ourselves as commissioners and it is a very good idea to build the schools up, but coupled with that, you have to take into consideration, a lot of things that would go into that would require higher construction costs. It'd be higher construction costs in terms of structural reinforcement. You also have safety concerns and then stairways and stairwells take up valuable space. That space that is used for, you know, transitioning students from upstairs to downstairs. One of my biggest fears too is the little kids and even to the teenagers, they get wild in those stairways. I went to a high school with a stairwell. A lot of things happen in that stairwell, but I'm not going to say what, but it did. My concern is it kind of complicates the alarm system for an upstairs-downstairs sprinkler systems and et cetera. Moving students from a safety standpoint, from upstairs down the stairwell outside instead of right down the hallway and right outside. So there's a lot of factors considered. I'm not saying your idea is wrong because ideally it would be, but those are the things that we have to consider and we have to consider that the biggest thing is the cost effectiveness of adding all these extra reinforcements to the structure, the losing space in the stairwell, the safety concerns. Then we have, we have physically handicapped children that may not traverse up the stairwell, so that would require an elevator, which would also cost an extensive amount of money. So all those things from building a single story school structure to a two-story school structure, when on paper, and when you think about it, it makes sense because you're going up instead of out, so you use less land. But with that, you bring a lot of added responsibilities and liability potentially by building a two-story school. And my biggest thing is the cost because it'll definitely, if you pay 10 million for a single story, I guarantee the cost for two-story building is going to be almost twice that because of all the structural reinforcement, all the alarm systems and stairwells and safety concerns. So that's the only thing that I have a problem with. But your idea is good. It would make a lot of sense, but the problem is, is it cost effective? And is it cost effective in terms of our students' health, students' well-being from a safety standpoint? So those are the concerns that I have, but I appreciate your, I appreciate your comments. So enough of that, but the other thing, you know, I heard, let me, I just want to commend the staff for handling some difficult situations. You know, we sit, we got Commissioner Buchanan, it sits on the fire commission and we've taken the fire EMS responsibility seriously to the point where we have appointed a subcommittee as well to put emphasis into that arena, which encompasses Commissioner Paget and Commissioner Carpenter, who provide extra eyes and extra look on whatever issue they may be, which I think is a great idea. But I want to commend the staff for coming up with that concept. I want to commend them for the hard work that they are putting into EMS and fire because that is a number one priority within our county. And not a day goes by where there's not some mention of fire rescue, certain contracts just recently, I think Paul was in a meeting with certain contracts. So I want the public to see and to know what our staff does and the commissioners that are sitting on this board, they get involved because they are heavily involved. And I know our staff is not sitting on their laurels. They're in there doing the work, addressing a problem and hitting it head on. And of course, we've got extra eyes to look in and to give opinions, which is very valuable. So I want to appreciate the commissioners who decided to step up and to do that on the subcommittee and David and your staff, you know, continue to march, continue to punch through and, and then recently, just one last thing. It's very convenient, not convenient, but it's very refreshing when a commissioner or two has an issue, we can pick up the phone and call our county manager or we can pick up the phone and talk to somebody and it's not falling on deaf ears. There are a lot of things that the county, that we're responsible for, I take it, we're responsible for a lot of things in this county, for the citizens, we're your representatives. With that responsibility comes a lot of time and a lot of effort. And suffice it to say, these people that we have on our staff are working hard and listening to everything that is being said. They don't just blow it off and say that's somebody who's just mouthing off, they take it seriously. Because usually where there's smoke, there's fire. And we don't have all the answers to every issue, but it's our job as commissioners to oversee what they do in terms of finding out the issue and not only finding out the issue, but presenting a reasonable resolution quickly. So my hat's off to you, David. My hat's off to the staff for working very hard and I really appreciate their efforts. Budget's coming up. We're looking at it very hard, all the commissioners are. We have questions. We're going to have some, probably some disagreements, but we're going to do the very best we can on our budget to make it sufficient, to make it reasonable, not just for us, but for the citizens that we represent. And I appreciate your input and we've got nonprofits coming up as well and we'll be looking at everything, we'll be scrutinizing everything with a magnifying glass to make sure we make the right decisions. So just bear with us. We're in a very, very busy time of the year right now, from now until June and first part of July. So thank you guys for coming and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. First, I'd just like to recognize on, I think Saturday may have been his official first day, but today is his official first day in the building is Dr. Chris Barnes, our Onslow County School Superintendent, which has a new ring to him for that. So our superintendent, Dr. Chris Barnes, day one, he's here with us today and as always, he's brought his chief, chief finance guy there, Jeff Holloman, with him as well. I don't know if, I don't know if Mr. Holloman's trying to stick close to Dr. Barnes to keep him in line with finance. I'm not sure, but I see he's here with our new superintendent. So congratulations, Dr. Barnes, on your new, your new position with Onslow County Schools. We're on the topic of fire and EMS. I was at my, my job last week and someone come running in because my wife happened to be there too and something about Ms. Foster ran out, fire trucks in the driveway and fire at the house. Well, they said that, they didn't realize that was my wife, so I said, who? So I took off and left. When I got to my house, I had the Roach Town brush truck, the water truck from Verona and the, I think it was nine mile truck that was there as well. And across the woods was Southwest and the forestry service and others. The, the woods were on fire, someone was burning, went through their yard into the woods and then feet from my house. And they got that taken care of and then out of curiosity later that evening, I said, let me go see how much is burned out there. I went back into the woods and on a windy day, fire under the brush comes up and I had to make a call back out to Ray Silence, who was at Southwest Volunteer Fire Department that sent a truck back out, who then had to call another brush truck in to put it out again. With all that being said, Halls Run also had a big fire, I believe, on Saturday and there may be another one down around the Dixon area as well. So this is my public service announcement from all of the fire services in Onslow County. Now is not a good time to burn trash or brush or leaves or anything else because it is dry, it is windy, and when you turn your head from it, you are going to watch hundreds of acres, if not homes, go up as well. Be patient, as Commissioner Davis said, be patient. Put the trash in the barrel and take it to the landfill and wait and see how, how that operation works on a Saturday morning, right, Commissioner Davis?
And they did.
They do a great job out there. So just, just don't burn, don't burn because it can become very costly very quickly. So with that being said, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right. We are adjourned. Have a great day.[1772.85][1772.85]